Go down to the public station and refuel as well. We've worked on over 3,000 new home projects with Katie Holmes. They've been a steadfast partner. But we see this kind of partnership growing amongst government officials, not just in Lancaster, but all over the state. I think David said it well, that at the end of the day, it's often local public officials...
We're gonna go ahead and get started. Home meeting to order. Roll call, please.
This is for the City Council and Authority. Councilmember Authority Member Johnson.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chair Perez. We have a quorum.
Would you excuse Mayor Perez?
I'll second that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries to order.
Call to order the Housing Authority Meeting. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Authority Member Harvey.
Present.
Ma'am.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zettel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Day of vacation is by John Meadows, Christian Life Assembly. Welcome, John.
Lord, we thank you for today and for this opportunity to come here and conduct the business of the city. I pray that you'd give our City Council wisdom and the Housing Authority wisdom and direction, Lord. Lord, we thank you for a great weekend, Father with the Blue Angels and the home show. Thank you for the beautiful flowers that are blooming around the valley. Father, I pray your continued blessing upon this city as we honor you and, as our motto says, "Trust you with everything." Father, bless our businesses, Lord, the small business owners. Give them wisdom and strength and provide for them. And, Lord, we thank you in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
We're gonna ask Jennifer to come forward. She's going to come to the mic and lead us in the pledge.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Councilwoman Johnson, you're gonna do a couple presentations for us.
We are. Let me get myself organized. Good evening, everyone. How are we today? Just wanted to mention a little bit Jennifer, the young lady who just came up and did a pleasure allegiance. She just expressed to me that she used to be Miss Lancaster many, 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 many moons ago. So let's give her a round of applause for Miss Lancaster. You know, more importantly than that, Jennifer had approached me one day, one evening, I should say, at an event, and she approached me as a mother, not as Miss Lancaster. She approached me about her child. What she shared with me about her child as a mother myself was very touching, and it was an understanding of our community in a specific area. One of, one out of 88 people have autism. And when we realize that that's quite a bit, and for me to realize that I hadn't educated myself in autism, and maybe realize, maybe many of us haven't either, the good thing is, is that she brought it to our attention. So we're determined to educate and be more sensitive to autism. There's different levels of autism. Depend on the level that they are in would also depend on the way that they're able to function in the community. Autism doesn't just affect the child or the adult, it also affects all the families. Jennifer just shared with me that she had planned a trip to Vegas, unfortunately wasn't able to because of a reaction that her son has had through autism. Not that she's bothered by that, but that's the lifestyle that has to be made with family members with autism. We're blessed to be able to have that the month of April is Awareness Month for autism. The City of Lancaster has embraced it, and one of the things that they acknowledge is the blue light. So we ask all people here in our community, for the month of April, if you're able in any way, shape, or form, your business, your home, or wherever you can, to light a blue light for the month of April. We, the City of Lancaster, will be doing that at Moa and also at LPAC. My husband and I will also be doing it at the University Valley. And it's just to remind us that autism exists, is to remind us to understand it better, is to remind us what we are about here in a community, that we embrace all of us. And it's also to make us understand each other. When we feel that a child is throwing a tantrum in the store, let us not judge, let us give a helping hand. So with that being said, we'd like to also acknowledge that there's a symbol for autism, and it is a blue pen, excuse me, a blue pen that is shaped like a puzzle. And the reason it's shaped like a puzzle is because autism is a puzzle. So if you're able to, please take time in your schedule to educate yourselves on autism and help these families and embrace it. And we thank you, Jennifer, for bringing it to our attention so that we can be there as a community, as one. Thank you very much. Jennifer, if you could come up, please. So we are officially at the City of Lancaster acknowledging the month of April as the National Autism Awareness Month. Please acknowledge the family members that have come up too, to acknowledge.
All right, now that I took my big, deep breath, thank you. I just wanted to say it literally means the world to all the families like me, and there would have been a lot more of us, but our kids are unpredictable. And so I know that there were a lot of parents that said that they would be here tonight, but doctor's appointments, meltdowns, you never know what's gonna happen, so you kinda just have to fly by the seat of your pants. So we have Celia's family, and I really appreciate you guys being here. And again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing this and acknowledging our kids. Thank you.
We thank you for making us aware. And another thing, just to close with this topic, is we do have some material here for autism. We have a jog-a-thon for autism at the Jet-Hawk Stadium, and there's flyers here for more information if anybody would like to pick some up. We're gonna leave it here, in the back. Okay? We'll leave it in the back. Okay, on a different note, speaking of our children, our community, we'd like to acknowledge our SOAR Student of the Month. And this month, we have Ms. Tori Collins. Hi, Tori, how are you? Congratulations. It's wonderful. Okay, Ms. Tori Collins has received the SOAR Award for the month with the City of Lancaster. Just a little bit about Tori. She is a SOAR Ambassador for the years of 2011 to 2014. She has been part of the Visual and Performing Arts Club. She was the Treasurer and the Secretary for the years of 2010 and 2014. She was a key club president and vice president for 2011, 2014, school site council for 2012, 2014, and a church nursery volunteer for 2008 to present. Yes? On top of all that, you're also a top-notch student, right? And you make your parents proud every day. All right, that deserves a big round of applause. Her career goes to be a certified speech-language pathologist. Tori has excellent communication skills and is ideal for her chosen field. She understands the responsibility of reaching a top-notch education and has been working hard to achieve her goals. She will be receiving an associate's degree in arts and humanities from ABC, a week, one week, after graduating high school. That deserves a big round of applause. Tori's dream is to attend Boston University in fall of 2014. Very proud of you, honey. You are a great example for our community, our youth, and many of us women. Thank you very much.
Sandra?
Yes.
You forgot the best part.
Oh, I did. You know, thank you for reminding me. I get to give away money that's not mine. That's always fun. So you also get a $1,000 scholarship from our mayor, Rex Perez. Let's give Tori another big round of applause. Well deserved. Yeah, that actually felt kinda nice, giving away Rex's money.
I told you.
Oh, wow, I like that. That felt really good. Do that more often. Another thing that we'd like to acknowledge, this weekend, we had such an amazing historical weekend. We were all so proud, as I was mentioning to other colleagues of mine here in our community, what a proud, proud weekend for us to feel the pride of being Americans, the airshow. I mean, you couldn't feel anything but the pride. I was driving around town, and you could see everyone just looking up. They were just parking in the desert or wherever to look up and see all of the wonderful airplanes that were flying, those Blue Angels to be here and honor us with their presence. That was just amazing, to see these children, so excited to see them and seeing the history being made. To do that, we'd like to acknowledge some people that were a big part of the airshow for the weekend. And before we do, we'd like to thank everyone that did go to the airshow, because it really did show how all of us come together and how we make it happen. And that was a proud weekend, so thank you for everyone who showed up. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
As the councilwoman said, we'd like to properly honor some of the folks. I'd like to have our deputies come up. Steve Owen, Addington, and Lance, please. We'd also like to invite Pastor up and Rhonda Perez. We had a lot of people that worked really hard and really smart this weekend, city staff and the Sheriff's Department, but these folks are up here representing their organization because it wouldn't have happened without them. They were also involved in the planning. Let me give you just a minute of what went on. In every event, the three things that are the hardest to do, that no one ever wants to do, are traffic, parking, and public safety. Lancaster had the hat-trick. We got all of those because others could not or would not do those. Parking is an example. 70,000 people to go to a facility that has no parking lot. Rhonda was in charge of finding parking for 70,000 people that we didn't own, getting property owners to let us use their property, getting someone to prepare the lot for free, and then at the last minute told, oh, by the way, you have to manage the parking lot. She did that with, it was amazing what they did. Public safety. Leiderico, our public safety manager, was in charge of Blue Angel Security, the Ops Plan, and other agencies. Getting other agencies to put money in to pay for security, that was no mean task. Sheriff's Department, led by Steve Owen and others, and Lance out there was amazing. I don't think people realize some things that happen to Sheriff's Department. I saw Lance personally deal with everything from traffic to real public safety issues to people calling to complain that the jets were too loud scaring their dogs, and he handled every one of them perfectly. The dog one, he didn't handle as well, probably. Person I really wanna highlight is our traffic engineer, Pastor Casanova. In city government, the one job that everyone on earth thinks they can do is be a traffic engineer, because everyone drives, so you know how to be a traffic engineer. This gentleman was out there both days. He was calm, he was confident, he was adaptable in the field, changing things on the fly, directing the staff to do this and that. We really had a great team, and this airshow would not have been successful without these folks. There's a lot of people who get credit. These people really do deserve credit. And as a bonus, we had the best hospitality suite in the entire event. We had other people crashing our party. So we really wanna thank these people. Please give them a big hand for what they did. And Vice Mayor, I'd like to invite you down to say a couple words and hand out with Councilwoman Johnson the certificates.
Many times, we're able to be proud of who we are in Lancaster, but this made me be proud of who I am as an American. This made you look up in the sky and really say, "That's what we're all about. That's what America's about." And thank you, guys, for what you did. We really appreciate how you can fit 100,000 people into 10,000 lots. I don't know. You did a wonderful job, and thank you very much. So we'd like to recognize each one of you and our own Rhonda Perez. Thank you, Rhonda. Pastor, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sergeant Steve Owens. Deputy John Addington. Deputy Lance Jordan. Thank you. And Mr. Lee DeRico.
Vice Mayor, we gave away Rex's money for them too?
Uh. (laughing).
Thank you, Sandra. You do a wonderful job giving away Rex's money. We really appreciate that.
No problem.
City Manager, items to be removed?
Yes, we'd like to ask that CC4 be removed and rescheduled for the next meeting, and we apologize for any inconvenience that may cause.
Okay. Successor agency actions, Barbara? I don't think we have any speaker cards. Do you guys wanna wave?
Yes.
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 Okay. I need a motion and a second for adoption of resolution SA 05-14.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Oh, wait.
Motion passes 4-0. Council minutes. We have no speaker cards.
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries 4-0. Consent calendar. We did pull CC4.
And I need to recuse myself from CC2, please.
CC2, we'll pull CC2 and CC8, because Mr. Reeves is, would like to speak on that. Mr. Reeves.
Vice Mayor, Chris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen.
Are you speaking on CC2 or CC8 or both?
Both.
Okay. CC2, you'll have to leave. Okay. Thank you, Michael.
I had a chance to examine the attachment with the check and wire registers for February through March, and I saw some familiar items that we've discussed before. $10,315.99 for copy release. I saw $1.7 million for LA County Sheriff. Saw some legal fees in the range of $66,000 to one law firm and $30,000 to another law firm. And I also saw $31,000, $32,000 for the animal care housing cost. This prompts me to ask, you know, why don't we have a city attorney that's elected and full-time so that we don't encourage some of these legal costs? It also causes me to ask, why can't we have the animal care costs go down? If we prohibit the sale of animals in Lancaster, maybe we will not have to pay $32,000 for shelter animals. And we pay the LA County Sheriff $23 million a year, and I'm wondering if this $1.7 million is on top of the $23 million. Those are the concerns I have about the expenditures. The other thing, CC8, I have some questions about that. Apparently, this solar farm, they're going to pay us $1,700 per acre for 20 years, and I'm wondering if that's $1,700 a month per acre for 20 years. And also, I had some concerns about the liability in the contract. Article 8 talks about default remedies and liability. I wish the council would go back to where it was before, where we had three minutes to talk about each agenda item. I know why it was changed, because people were abusing the privilege, but I wish the council would go back to where we could speak three minutes on each agenda item so that I could go into more detail about these items. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Reeves, do you need more time?
Thank you. I noticed in the paper that a solar power project was nixed by a national park, and I'm wondering, you know, this prompts me when I see these solar plants all over the place, how safe are they? You know, there's one over by 40th Street East by the Baptist College, there's another one by the freeway. I'm just concerned about the radiation of all these projects. And if they would have, if they have nixed one that's gonna be put by a national park, have we been aware of things that could happen like they did in this project where they nixed it? It's something to think about, and it's also something to think about when we make contracts with these people, about the actual damages that we incur, so that if there are damages that the solar people will pay the actual damages, and also compensate damages if there's liability and people are harmed. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second on CC2 and CC8.
Move to adopt 2 and 8.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on CC2, CC8. Let's vote.
I voted. You wanna do reset?
You wanna? Okay.
Okay.
Motion carries 3 to 0 with Sandra Johnson abstaining on CC2. Would you? I need a motion for the rest of the consent calendar, please.
Move to the doubt the consent calendar is currently comprised.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Motion carries 4-0. JNB1. Jason?
Vice Mayor, Council, before you, today is an action to approve an amended lease, to a lease that you have already approved. It's for a solar project located on city property. It's, it is going to be a 30-acre project located just east of the soccer center, and will generate about $1.29 million over the life of the project for a 20-year lifespan, and we, again, this is a project we've already approved. The changes are specific to the title and the name of the entity who's gonna be building the project. Typically, as these projects proceed, they change ownership for financing purposes and development purposes. This agreement makes that change on that behalf, and that project is ready to go. It has all the land use approvals, development approvals, Edison approvals, and we'll hopefully see some people getting jobs and being employed on that site very soon. So with that, I would recommend that you approve the amendment to the lease.
Michael Rios.
Vice Mayor, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. This is another solar energy project, and my concern about this one is it's near the Lancaster National Soccer Center, and as I mentioned before, I am hesitant about the safety of these projects. Also, in this contract, this is another one of these situations. The solar energy site lease agreement and supporting document revisions are necessary to accommodate developer lending requirements and the change of project size. Once again, we're altering agreements we make with other entities, and I've mentioned before that there should be a penalty for this, if we have to alter agreements all the time, use our legal staff to do that. As I mentioned, we spend, in the latest check register, we're spending $90,000 for legal fees, one of which is for grant, grant writing. But if we had our own city attorney, we might not have to spend so much, and also, we would not have to spend so much if we penalize these people for altering their agreements. Another thing is that we complain about the Palmdale Power Plant, and there are fumes that are gonna go over the soccer field, and here we are approving a project that possibly might jeopardize children. We don't know. Thank you.
Any discussion? We need to take two separate actions on this, one for the City Council, so let's do the City Council one first.
We would approve the recognition and the attorney agreement and memorandum of the property lease with Somus FMG LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents and make any non-substantive changes necessary to complete the transaction.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Action carries 4-0. Let's do the power authority.
Can I have you read the next one, too?
You.
You did good, Ron.
Through the solar energy site lease agreement, memorandum of property lease, memorandum of solar energy... of solar energy site lease agreement, agreement to terminate options agreement, and master solar purchase and safe agreement termination agreement with Somas LLC, and authorize the executive director and execute all documents and make any non-substantive changes necessary to complete the transaction.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by voting.
You mean, I got it right?
Yeah, you got it right.
You did good.
Can I vote on that one?
Yeah. It's the Lancaster Power Authority.
Oh, sorry.
Motion carries 4-0. New Business, NB 1. Robert, is Lisa making too much noise back there for you?
Absolutely not. Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Deputy Mayors. We have a very successful recycling program. Our twenty-four-hour recycling center was California Resource Recovery Association's most outstanding household hazardous waste, universal waste, and e-waste program of 2013. By July, we project recycling over five hundred thousand pounds of e-waste and more than eleven thousand gallons of used oil. I think people like it because they can go anytime they want, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and drop off used and unwanted antifreeze, oil, batteries, computers, old television sets, lamps, fans, list goes on. We have been working with various groups to encourage recycling events and collection events with schools and apartment complexes. One thing that we've heard the public ask for over and over is, can't you take our used paint? So staff is pleased to bring before you today Resolution 1412, which would allow us to execute an agreement that we could collect used and unwanted paints, stains, varnishes, sealers, we'll just call them paint products. This, this, the agreement with Paint Care, which is a nonprofit stewarding organization for the California Architectural Paint Recovery Program, established by Assembly Bill 1343, would allow not only homeowners but businesses to bring their paint products to us. We would collect them at no cost to the city, and if we were able to reuse those products, such as in graffiti, painting, we would get paid for the use of that paint. I'm going to take a section, a little moment here and talk about, these are products that we're currently taking at our recycling center, and with your approval, we'd like to add the paint products. There is no cost for our services, it's open to everyone, and it doesn't, and you don't even have to be a Lancaster resident to use our recycling center. We hold special events and collect, e-waste and oil collection events throughout the year. Our next one will be May 3rd and 4th, Saturday and Sunday, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The events that we've had, we have hundreds of people come. We will have a booth at the Poppy Festival, and we hope that everyone comes out and checks us out. In our net, in New Business Item Number 4, I'll tell you more about grant money that we are receiving and how we propose to expand our services. But what I would like to leave everyone with is, let them know where our recycling center is located. It's at our maintenance yard facility at 615 West Avenue H. Our recycling coordinator's number's on that screen, it's Jason McClure, his number is six-six-one-seven-two-three-five-eight-eight-five. And we would like to talk to anyone who's interested in recycling, and how we could partner together and host recycling events. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions.
You've done a great job, great job out there. Haven't we received several awards for this program?
We have, we have been very successful, lots of, not, not only recognition, but we've been successful at getting grant monies, and, and honestly, we, we, we take our recycled stuff and turn it into cash for our, our community, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we call, call for the vote, Robert, do you think, obviously, if this passes and we've added one more item to the recycling program, do you think it's possible that we could get that in the newsletter, and maybe we just ought to have that as a, like, maybe the back page and just print it, you know, every time it goes out? Because I think what happens is, when we do the fanfare, I think we get a great response, but then I think it has a tendency to die down, and they don't know that it's twenty-four hours, and, you know, here's another item. What do you think?
City manager says yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
It'd be nice to have a little slip that goes in the every waste management bill, too.
Maybe we'd be talking to Waste Management.
We'd talk Waste Management, since we're picking up their recyclers there.
Lot of good ideas coming in.
Yeah, there we go.
Lot of good ideas.
We just wanted to try to give you more money here.
And here's Mr. Reeves with more good ideas.
Vice Mayor, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say, and as I'm walking around the community these days, I always tell the public, we have a incredible, incredible staff here at City Hall. Now, you can argue with us, the politicians, but you can't argue with our incredible staff and city manager. And I, I wrote a letter to the paper the other day praising them, and I don't think they're going to publish it because of what's coming up in April, but I did commend our staff and our city manager for incredible work. And this is fantastic project. As I mentioned, we should make our city the recyclable city of the world, in addition to the solar energy city of the world. And this is another one of the great projects they have. I remember the last one they had over there on Avenue I, where they were taking all electronic equipment. It was so well organized, every, and they gave you tickets to some event, I can't remember, but it's incredible program. The only thing I have to say about it is, I'm concerned about the contract with this, and it has to do with damages and so forth. If something happens, who's, who's responsible? The paint people are, that's my only concern about it, but it's incredible project by incredible staff. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Michael.
You know, if I heard Michael write, he's saying that's a great program along with the solar, so I was really, that was really dumsy to, to hear that. But thanks, Michael, we appreciate that.
Any other comments? I need a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 14-12.
So moved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote. Motion passes 4-0. NB 2.
Actually, Shannon Dow's going to handle that.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris, City Council members. Thank you. I'm proud to announce tonight that we are preparing to install, upon your approval, the city's first energy storage system. And this will in fact be the first energy storage system in the high desert. This, the story began at the Energy Storage North America Conference. As you're aware, Mayor R X Paris has represented the city at a number of conferences and events in terms of energy storage and our net zero energy goals. So in September 2013, he attended this conference, and he was actually the keynote speaker that evening. And in that conference, he met Green Charge Networks, and Steve Kelly is here tonight to represent them. So out of this connection, the Lancaster Power Authority staff began working with Green Charge Networks to identify opportunities to implement solar energy storage on city So the goals were twofold, to further the city's net zero energy goals, and of course, to save energy costs. After researching the various energy facilities, we found that MOA was the best candidate for us to implement energy storage here in the city of Lancaster. So this model uses 2013 as a baseline, because usage varies from year to year. But assuming that baseline, we would save, beginning at thirty-two hundred dollars a year, and assuming a three percent cost escalator as energy costs continue to increase, these are the savings over the life of the project. And the best thing you'll notice here, this shows the cost of the project to the city. There's no cost whatsoever, because this is being funded through a California Energy Commission grant. So out of this, we will get energy storage, cutting-edge technology, and energy savings without costing taxpayers a dime. And on top of that, we will also get a Nissan DC Fast Charger to serve the MOA parking lot, so that individuals who have plug-in vehicles are able to use them. And of course, all of these are available in the Lancaster Auto Mall. We have Steve Kelly here to describe more in detail about the technology that will be used. We'll have a separate one.
While he's pulling that up, I wanted to, first of all, appreciate the time here today, and also to thank you for the city and the City Council members for your leadership, not only in the state, but also across the country for your sustainability and net zero goals. I spent the last seven years in the solar industry and was always in awe of the leadership you took on a national scale. So personally, I wanted to say thank you for that. And we are excited to work with you on this project. Green Charge Networks, I'll give a quick background, a little bit about us, and then about the project. We've been in business now for 2009. We have systems across the country installed, and primarily, it's using intelligent energy storage to reduce peak demand charges. There's a number of customers, both from the city, from the county, as well as from national retailers and other entities that are using this technology across the country. Most people don't realize that there's two parts of your commercial bill. One part is your demand charges, which is the maximum amount of energy used for a fifteen-minute window. The other portion is the kilowatt-hours, which is how much you use. You've been very aggressive in reducing the kilowatt-hour size of your bill through solar energy efficiency and other measures. One of the hardest things to redo is reduce the demand portion. And that's specifically what this energy does, is it stores electricity and then dispatches energy when the building load is at its highest. So you'll be saving thirty-seven dollars per kilowatt, which is the TOU8 rate schedule for many of your facilities. In this one, you're on an A-10, so it's, it's less than that, but it's still a substantial part of your energy bill. The other thing that you may not realize is, this is the highest increasing cost of your electricity bill. On the schedule you're on in the city, it's averaging seven point one percent per year with SCE. It's one of the highest increases in the nation for the last seven years. Whereas your kilowatt hour is actually going down, slightly, but going down. So what does the system look like? It's really comprised of two key pieces. One is the energy storage system that will be going inside the electrical room, and the second is the Nissan DC Fast Charger. And why this DC Fast Charger is unique is it charges the vehicle, so if you had a, a leaf, instead of taking four to five hours in a Level 2 charger, or eight to 10 at your house, it will charge eighty percent of it in less than twenty minutes. So these are designed to be, people come in, charge, and quickly can go. So for visitors to the museum, for residents in the area wanting to come downtown, or for travelers coming through, this is a great option to get a very quick charge, get their vehicle filled back up, and on the road again without a lot of time or hassle. It also is providing the savings to the facility by reducing the demand charges with the energy storage system.
Question?
Yes.
It says a Nissan Leaf, is that the only vehicle it fits?
No, it's a Chatham O connector, so it's a universal connector with any Chatham O. So it is the most widely adopted DC Fast Charger of all types. So if you've got a Tesla, if you've got a Nissan Leaf, if you've got other types of vehicles that have a Chatham O connector, you'll be able to use it.
So it fits the Chevys, the Fiat's, the Fords?
So the Ford, it will not fit, because they're not designed for a DC Fast Charger configuration. So most of the problems that you'll have in certain vehicles is, it can't take that high direct current into the vehicle at the same level. So they wouldn't be able to use a DC Fast Charger at all. Does that make sense?
Sure.
At least not with the current technology.
Not with the current technology, that is correct. And, and so unfortunately, until you get standardization across all cars on a standard regular charger and a fast charger, there unfortunately will be some vehicles that won't be able to use this.
And you're going to point that out? Are there, will there be signs there that point that out?
Yeah, it will know it's a Chatham O connector, and in the, in all of the online tools and the mapping services, it maps out what type of connector it has. So if you're an EV driver, you'll know what you can connect to, and you'll be able to find that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So we're looking where that blue, in this graph here, you'll see the blue container, we're looking at putting the DC Fast Charger between the first two spots, so it could be utilized between the two vehicles there. And then the energies, the energy storage unit will actually go inside the facility. I think the map's got the two mixed up, but it'll be inside the facility out of sight. And as Shannon had mentioned, and I also wanted to say thank you to her and all of her staff, they've done a tremendous job, I don't know where she went, oh, there you are, of really driving this and being able to secure, which is the value of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the city at no cost. And then also having an ongoing savings on the project for the city. And that's really it, unless there's some questions.
Is there a cost for the residents to use the chargers?
There is. So there is multiple ways in which the residents can use it. As, as you probably realize, you can't give a gift of public funds, and so they are charged a fee through the EV Go network. EV Go is a subsidiary of NRG Energy, so they're one of the largest in the country. And they can either have a one-time payment, where they can come up and use it with a credit card. They can have a subscription, so they can have a monthly flat fee or a variable fee based on how often they use it, and that's how they would pay for it. And the city has recouped one hundred percent of the energy cost that is consumed by the charger through a refund back, which is a portion of the charges that the user would have.
Is there a cost for the city to maintain the chargers?
No, all of the maintenance is included as part of this agreement, so we are responsible for the insurance, the O and M, and any vandalism or anything like that occurs is our responsibility.
Shannon, can you put in for a grant from the AVA QMD to defer the cost, so it's free?
How, the cost to charge your vehicle?
Right. Thank you. Michael Reeves? You're back up.
Vice Mayor, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Some of the concerns I had about this project were answered, about the, the chargers and the costs and so forth. I think it's great. This is another example of our city government working. Our, our city administration is able to get grants you never heard of, and we were able to do capital projects like this. This is another example of the great city staff we have, and I'm so glad to hear about this, because this puts us in the forefront. If somebody wants to get a, a electric car, they know where they can charge it, and it would also help us on our cost for some of our buildings. So congratulations, staff.
I need a motion.
I motion to approve NB 2.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, let's vote. Motion carries 4-0.
Welcome, sir. Vice Mayor, Council members, Deputy Mayor, staff. Very, very happy to be here tonight. It's been, it's been quite a while since the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization made a presentation to you. As you'll probably remember, last time I was here, we were talking about, about pit bulls, so this is obviously a much more pleasurable presentation, a lot less controversy. You, you guys will understand and know, for the last, last four years, every, every fall, the city does the Unite program. And we go, and, and a few years ago, you'll remember, we decided to focus on neighborhoods individually, one at a time. Last year, we did Desert View, we conducted town halls. What resources do the neighborhoods need? What resources, what, what are you looking for? What's not being provided? This year, we're going into Joshua for the fifth year. But during all of this transition, being kind of the, the senior member on the commission, through what you'll remember to be the transition from the previous names and, and purposes, we've kind of had some trouble securing our identity. But I think we've, we've, we finally found that, and, and we're, and we're ready to proceed, and so that's what I'm here to present to you today. Along with me, the, the commissioners ran with our Vice Chair Lisa Moulton, Chairman, Council, Commissioner Howard Harris, Angela Hearn, Michelle Kiefer, who's here today, Stan Mohammed, who's also here with me today, and Commissioner Dave. with me today, and Commissioner David Messor. So the last many months, what have we been doing?
Can you bring them up with you?
Sure.
Just your...
Oh, yeah, come on up. So the last many months, you probably wonder why we pull your staff away from City Hall and we go spend hours on end in the lantern in the Moa. And it's because we've been getting together with these great groups of people in an attempt to figure out what our neighborhoods are missing. What resources do they need? So we've had, you know, many of these community-based organizations, the hospitals, the medical providers, the County of Los Angeles, many of which are here today. From Mental Health America, we have Judy Cooperberg who's here to support what we're doing. From High Desert Medical Group, we have Rafael Gonzalez. From the Children's Bureau, we have Leslie Yaden. Obviously, Michelle Kiefer from Anlo Valley Partners for Health, and Frank Alvarez from the County of Los Angeles Public Health Department.
Steve, bring them up, let's see who they are.
Yeah, so come up. We have Judy, I think we all know who Judy is, Judy Cooperberg. We have Rafael Gonzalez from High Desert Medical Group, Leslie from the Children's Bureau, and Dr. Frank Alvarez from the County of Los Angeles. And then David Paul's been coming to all of our meetings as well. He's been giving us some good insight. So what have we been doing? We're trying to find a way, how do we make sure that these people who are running the community-based organizations, providing the resources for our neighborhoods, what are we doing here in the city of Lancaster to make sure they have their resources? And we found that there was a big problem with bridging the gap. How does, for instance, I'll use these two young ladies here, how does Michelle know what Judy's programs are available at Judy's organization? And years past, they used this thing. This is the Red Book, and this is an outdated, as soon as it's printed, I'm sure, stack of paper that nobody probably ever read. So we've spent the last many months talking about, what can we provide your organizations to be able to better assist to bridge that gap? And so we thought about, why do we need a paper Red Book? Let's put it online. You guys are all aware, the vistas here in the city of Lancaster that are brought to us through AmeriCorps put together the One Link program, which is for the volunteers. How do you volunteer for these programs? Well, let's take it one step further. How do we provide the neighborhoods and the people within the neighborhoods the ability to know what organizations are out there, the ability to know what's available on a Saturday through these organizations? When you're planning for an event for AVPH, how do you know that you're not going to step on somebody else's toes from another organization? I mean, we're all involved with the internet and social media. I mean, these organizations are too busy to update this thing. This is from 2009. I couldn't find a more current one. I can tell you how probably none of this stuff is worth anything. So how do we do it? We put it online. So what we're doing now is through the help of these organizations and many, many more is trying to find out, develop a program. You know, one of the many things that have been brought up in our presentations is, you know, if somebody comes into one organization, fills out an intake sheet, tells them about, everything about themselves, all the problems they're having, when they get referred to the next place, they gotta go through that whole process again. And as you can imagine, that's a very daunting process because they have to release public and, I mean, private information, they probably don't want the first person to know, let alone the next referral base. So is that deterring them from making the referral or to going to the next place that they could maybe get some assistance from? We don't know. But we're trying to find a way to utilize a system, you know, probably web-based, social media-based, to be able to connect these groups together. And really, the support we're looking for from you, from the council and the city of Lancaster, is see if we can get your backing so that we can go out and get more vistas through the AmeriCorps program, and go out there and get a new domain name, and basically put this Red Book online for the city of Lancaster, really for the greater Anlo Valley, which I imagine it will have to morph into, to make sure these organizations that are here in our city know what everyone's doing, so that our neighborhoods, so that the citizens of our neighborhoods can connect to them. You know, and there's so many great resources here, but how do our neighborhoods know how to find them? So once a year, we have the Unite program, and it does a fantastic job, and it's something the city should always support. And I love that we're focusing on neighborhoods one at a time because I think it's going to be able, we're going to get through all of them, and we're going to see really the benefit of it. But on a day-to-day basis, besides what we do in the fall, how can we make sure that the resources are provided? So again, we're going to go after the three individuals at the top of the picture there are vistas. They live here in the city of Lancaster, walking distance from City Hall, they use the City Hall space, and they're putting together this volunteer program. So we would like to add some more of them and use their brilliance to help us with this program as well. And then we've got to better utilize the wellness homes along with what the vistas are doing to be able to offer these programs with these organizations, and then publicize them on this Red Book. I mean, so really, we don't need a lot of help, and you'll love to know that we really don't need a lot of money from what it appears we're attempting to do. Besides hosting a domain, some of the annual maintenance administration that goes with that, we can probably, through grants and with AmeriCorps and other programs, be able to provide the labor force and the volunteer work. Because we need somebody to be able to keep these organizations accountable to make sure they update what's going on, so that we don't, in four years from now or five years from now, have another Red Book except the difference is it's online. So, you know, and Mama Vega, I'll call her Mama Vega, she's the lady that makes all the wonderful salsa in town, she came and said, "The city, you guys need to stop at these meetings, say we're going to try something. You guys need to go and do it." So this is what we're going to do. So bottom line is, is that, you know, we're here to let you know that, you know, while we've been spending many months pulling the staff over to the Moa, the commission's really been listening to these great organizations. I don't have a lot to offer because I'm not in the day-to-day operations of these things, but these people are, and they're telling us what they need. So over the next few months, I want to be able to try to get the prototype ready to be able to try, so we can launch something like this to see how it can work. You know, and I'm sure that we have hoops to jump through with various federal and state regulations with some of the information we're going to try to use, but bottom line is, people work so hard to do this, let's put it on the computer and make it accessible. You know, that's what we've been doing. You know, open up any questions to you guys. You know, I hope we can get your support. Obviously, we're not here for any, you guys don't have to make any decisions tonight, but we're, you know, it's been a long time since we presented our commission, and we wanted to let you know this is what we're doing. We're trying to find a way to better the neighborhoods. And after months and months and months of, I think, kind of a lost identity, I think this is what we've sat upon, so.
You guys do wonderful work, and we really appreciate everything that you guys do. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, actually, thank you for the information that you shared, but even more so, thank you to the leaders of our community for what you represent and to even come to the city and say what it is your needs are so that we may have the opportunity to be able to give those needs. We applaud you because, as we know, it takes a village to make things happen. I really like, what is her name, Mama Vega, love her saying, as we always say, you know, "Stop complaining and let's do something about it." It's basically what she's saying. And again, we applaud all of you for what you do, and that's what it takes is for us to come together so we can help our community. And I love all those ideas. I think that we definitely, together, will make it happen. Thank you.
Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Guys, appreciate it. Thanks to staff, really.
Or, sorry, let's have it. David Paul.
Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. As Stephen mentioned, it's been my privilege to attend these meetings, and the thing I take away from it most is that all these dedicated professionals donate their time to try and make the city a better place, and that inspires me. And there's a lot of ideas coming out, and I went to the press conference the other day with the vistas, that was one of the funnest events in recent memory. And these young people are incredible, and they have some plans, and I think we should hitch our wagon to their star as well. But to everybody that works on this, just, I'm in awe of the effort you put in and the time that you spend grinding up the sausage to make our city a better place. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, David. We don't have any speaker cards. Do you want to wave the reading?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. We need a motion, a second.
I motion to approve NB4.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, let's vote. Recommendation carries 4-0.
$37,000 in grant funds.
Another. NB5. Elizabeth?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Chris, and City Council Members. Because of the efforts of Vice Mayor Marvin Chris and City Council Members, the city of Lancaster, at the request of the 5th District of Los Angeles County, was granted $8,000 from the reallocation of unused funds and an additional $8,000 for inclement weather from LASSA. LASSA is a joint powers authority created by the City of Los Angeles and County of Los Angeles, and is the lead agency in the HUD-funded Los Angeles Continuum of Care, managing over $70 million annually in federal, state, county, and city funds for the purpose of planning, coordinating, and managing resources for homeless programs. Since the inception of the Lancaster Community Shelter, LASSA has never awarded additional grant funds to the operation of the Lancaster Shelter above and beyond the prescribed allocation. The $16,050 is for the Winter Shelter Program to address the basic shelter and service needs of homeless persons during the period in which Los Angeles County usually experiences its most inclement weather. The funds will be for operating and supportive service costs associated with providing shelter, housing, and services to clients of the Lancaster Community Shelter while housed at the Anlo Valley Fairgrounds. Please approve the appropriation of $16,050 in awarded grant funds from the Los Angeles Services Housing Authority Winter Shelter Program 2013-14 to revenue account number 2613306200 and corresponding expense account number 2614542772. Any questions?
Comments?
No, thank you very much. It was very well said. And to follow what you said, Vice Mayor Marvin Chris has been an absolute hero in this. He's been very involved and very determined to get some funds, and this is shown with LASSA, to be able to do this is quite a great job, Vice Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say ditto that, you know, often at times, we forget about the things that some of the leaders do here with the city and to kind of take the lead on this. Marvin, I appreciate the contribution to the city.
Thank you. This is, it's truly about the partnership that has or is happening within the Anlo Valley, the partnership with Palmdale, the Los Angeles County, and everybody putting in money to do the emergency shelter. They know that we have a problem, they all understand that we're underfunded, they're all working together to solve the problem. So this is truly a community effort. But there's a lot of elected officials. We have Tom Lackey from the city of Palmdale that's really working hard towards this. So we have the County of Los Angeles that's actually done this, so it's a group effort. So, thank you. So, Michael Reeves. Sorry.
Vice Mayor Chris, Council Staff, ladies and gentlemen. You know that I've spoken about this before, that I really believe that we should partner with a mission or a facility down below to handle the homeless problem. And I won't get into that. In lieu of the current situation, and, you know, our weather is either cold or hot, and you know, I envision maybe construction of these, and you've seen them, these white, round, giant tents that could be constructed over at Sierra Highway or prefab building at Sierra Highway, so that these people would have a place in the winter and summer to stay. Something you might want to think about. So right now, you know, we're spending the money, but we need something permanent. In lieu of partnering with someone else or working out in the future a permanent mission, we could put up prefab or a tent-like structure over on Sierra Highway, since there's so many people downtown here who are homeless. So that's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation of the $16,050 in awarded in grant funds.
And I happily second.
We have a motion, a second, let's vote. Motion carries 4-0. Michael, I'm going to do CA1 and CR1 together because they have a lot to do with one another. So, you want to get up and speak on CR1?
Vice Mayor, Council Staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not aware, I know that Councilwoman Johnson and Vice Mayor Chris are on AVTA board, and I just wonder if they do, or is it feasible for the BYD people to construct shuttle buses in lieu of the large buses? Electric shuttle buses. You know, I've advocated shuttle buses in this town because shuttle buses, like the Dash program in Los Angeles, they run every 10 or 15 minutes. And because of our cold or hot weather, you're not going to find a whole lot of people that want to stand on the corner waiting for a bus. But if we had a electric shuttle program, perhaps more people would utilize it. I'd love it. I'd love not to have to drive somewhere and I could just go down the street, 10th Street West, and get a shuttle bus like you can in Los Angeles. Now, they have the large buses, and they also have the shuttle buses for short hauls. And we could argument the large buses on the long routes with the shuttle buses. You know, that's something that has to do with solar energy, recycling, and also transportation. It's a vision for the future, and it's something that we need to think about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. The report is the allocation of the additional CDBG funds for the homeless transition in the report for the AVTA. What we've been doing is working with the faith-based community and the social communities to address our homeless problem in the AV. Recently, we met with LASSA. It wasn't a very cordial meeting. It was very contentious. We wanted our fair share of the funds that we believe we should have. We have 12% of the homeless, we have 2% of the funds. Our homeless population has increased 393%. So we were discussing how we get more funding. They were telling us that, "Don't hold your breath because it's not going to happen." Until we start talking about 40% of our 6,500-plus people are veterans. When we start talking about the veterans, their ears perked up and said they can help us. They said that they can help us because they have over $1 billion to address the issue. So what we did with the AVTA today, and it was a privilege to make this happen, is they said the biggest problem is the transportation to take our veterans, whether they're homeless or not, but to take a veteran and to move them to Westwood Building 209 and have them go through the different processes in order for them to receive the services that they're entitled to. So we made that happen today at the AVTA. We're proud we made that thing, and we're proud to assist the veterans and to give back for what they've given to us. So that's my report on those two. Lancaster Housing Authority, we have nothing, financing, nothing. Executive Director, Mr. Puzigan, any announcements?
A couple, and then I'd like to have Pat Nelson after that make a couple. Number one, we try to balance what we presented council versus press conferences. We had two press conferences on two things that we didn't put here, but they deserve mentioning. One is the vistas. What this council in particular has showed, this community, is when you partner with people, it makes an amazing difference in the community, and you open government up. The Vista program, they've set up a volunteer network, they're going out, and they're engaging the community, and there's going to be a place where people online who want to volunteer will be able to register, and organizations who need volunteers will register at the same thing, and they'll be matched. That's going to have a real long-term effect on this community. That's going to have a real long-term effect on this community and it's a fantastic program. Number two, had the privilege and the honor of having Vice Mayor Chris and Councilman Smith at a recycled water announcement at City Park. That's again, one of those really long-term things that people are going to see the benefit for the next 50 years in the Antelope Valley. Under this council's leadership, they didn't wait until the drought was here and say, "What are we going to do?" They started seven years ago and four years ago when it was unpopular and put plans in place and got grants. And we are now able to deliver recycled water to not only our city park, but to Kaiser Permanente and others who connect. So I, it's a pleasure to have participated in that. And I don't know if either one of you want to comment on that before?
I think it's tremendous that just on the park alone, we're going to save over forty million gallons of water a year.
Freshwater.
Freshwater.
Imagine that.
So that's going to be used at homes rather than watering lawns at the city park. We think it's important to have a park to go to for the recreational purposes. We think it's important for you to have fresh water at your homes. So it's going to save, you know, forty million gallons, which is a tremendous effort. So I applaud, you know, the council and the Planning Commission prior to that for bringing it forward to the council. So I think that's just wonderful.
And with that, Captain Nelson was busy this weekend competing for the honor of the City of Lancaster and he has a report to make.
Sir Vice Mayor, members of the council. As some of you are probably aware, there is a relay race that's been going for about 30 years now between the town of Baker, California and Las Vegas. It involves anywhere from 6,000 to 8,000 runners, most of which are from various law enforcement agencies across the country, but we've got some of them that come from as far away as Germany and Australia. That race was held this weekend and it involves a 120-mile relay. And I'm pleased to announce that Lancaster Station actually won the station invitational with a time of just over 16 hours, beating the nearest competitor. Beating the nearest competitor, which was LAPD 77th, by 16 minutes. So guys really did a great job. It was a huge undertaking, as it is every year, with literally dozens and dozens of volunteers that helped all along the race line. Anything from ham radio operators to shuttle vehicle drivers and runners that, of course, the runners. But, and they've been training for that all year. So they were very happy to bring that trophy home.
Did you, you've broken off from other teams. You formed a new team just in Palmdale, correct? I mean, in Lancaster?
Yes. In years past, it's been a combined team. Last year was the first year that we ran as an individual station. And I believe Palmdale finished seventh in that category.
My understanding was the loser was supposed to present the other one with the trophy.
I'm not aware of that, but that sounds like a good idea.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think we should make that happen. And if you don't have a trophy, we'll be glad to buy you one.
I think we'll make that happen.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if the City Council, City staff and the City Manager need to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining. And the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be courteous and respectful of the three-minute timing to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
David Abber?
Good evening Vice Mayor Chris, Council members, staff and captain over there. First and foremost, I want to clarify something. There was a misunderstanding on my position with Mr. Vern Lawson, who's been a great asset to this community for well over two decades in county. With the power plant issue, I thought the way that that was handled was wrong and some people felt that my position was different. But I think that Mr. Lawson was done unfairly in that situation and that he's been a great asset to this community. I appreciate his service. Thank you very much. A lot of people have been asking me why I'm not running in this race. Well, I attempted to pull papers on the 6th of January, but due to the civil rights violations that were inflicted on me by the City Clerk Jerry Bryant, I was unable to run and I filed a claim. Last cycle, when I ran in 2012, I attempted to pull a candidate statement. At the end of my interview, Ms. Bryant asked me, "Was I going to have a candidate statement?" And I said, "Yes." And I asked for a waiver and she ushered me out saying, "It's time for you to go get out", only to have her office call me back four or five hours later to inform me that in fact I was correct. This last time around, I attempted to tape-record my nomination process with the Assistant City Attorney present. I questioned why we would have an Assistant City Attorney when the, my understanding of the election codes, and I've been speaking with Sacramento, is that the only person that should be in that process is the election officer, which would be Jerry Bryant, until the day of the election. So this is an issue I'm sure that I'll be continuing. I guess I wrote the wrong date down on my paperwork, so I'll be refiling my claim against the city for denying me and discriminating against me in my attempt to run for office. We need to start uniting this community better. The air show was a fantastic program and you guys did a great job. I want to commend you and thank you for bringing that to my community, our community. However, the paper on Thursday with the slanderous statements that were made against citizens attempting to run for office gives me a great alarm. It's the apology the next day was something to the fact that if I slighted or insulted any of the citizens, he apologized. That's our mayor. I was slandered in that process, so that goes a little farther than just insult and sliding. I feel that it's time for the resignation of the mayor. The city can no longer tolerate someone that divides this community at a time when we need to unite the community.
Thank you, David. Sue Plunkett?
Vice Mayor Chris, Council members and staff. It's come to my attention over the weekend that approximately last May, you changed the rules on animal control and how many animals are allowed to the LA County rules, which we had an exception on that where we were only allowed three animals in a, you know, in a space. I live in a townhouse association and I am on the board and we are quite alarmed about this because the code says that you can have three dogs and five cats. We have very small yards, very small area and our current CCNRs say you can have two animals. We're in the process of amending those and a lot of the owners want to go to whatever is the LA County rule. And if that happens, we will have a big problem. But it's not just our neighborhood. There's a lot of other townhouses and condos and a lot of the housing tracts nowadays have very small yards. And we would like to see you look at that again and maybe make some adjustments for areas where there is small yards and no yards. A lot of our yards just have concrete rock, you know, and things like that. I do have a map of our area and like what our sized yards are and it just doesn't accommodate that. It's not fair to the animals because they're cooped up in a small area and, you know, it's not fair to the people that live there. It's not healthy for either.
Let's get you some clarification real quick.
Yeah, Ms. Plunkett, I'm almost positive, I was sitting on the Planning Commission when we drafted the last order.
Mr. Mann is speaking to you.
Last order.
Don't figure she's talking to me.
So I, I'm sure that the ordinance is designed, I'm almost positive we wrote them based on the square footage. I know we did stuff for condos, R7,000. I'm almost positive.
I didn't see anything in there when I was reading it. And I actually talked to somebody that is in public safety that lives in my neighborhood that was also aware of this. So I just want to make sure that that is accommodated for because it's going to become a problem, not just for us, but when other people in townhouses that maybe their CCNRs say LA County rules, they don't know that that changed and now these people are going to bring in more animals to the communities.
Right. Mr. Puzigan?
There's a couple issues here and I'd like to refer you to our City Attorney after me. She'll give you a number to call so she can talk about the ordinance. We do operate under the rules of LA County to an extent the ordinance, but I believe Mr. Mann is right and we will look into that in terms of restrictions. But CCNRs can always be more restrictive. So for example, if the majority of your homeowners want to ban pets or limit the number of pets, a majority or whatever your rules say can do that as CCNRs. But we'd be happy to work with you and our City Attorney to deal with the specific issue.
Right. Because we, like I said, we're doing our CCNRs. We're having a big problem with that. And one of the biggest problems we're having is people wanting us, not wanting us to limit the amount of animals and us wanting to because of the health issues and just safety for everybody.
Okay. If, if you don't get the answers that you need, can you make sure you contact either Mr. Mann or myself and we'll help you through it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Coronado?
Sir, if you could give me a second while they come up. All right. Good evening. Normally I don't get embarrassed. I actually get a kick out of public speaking, but I'm extremely nervous. And one of the reasons I'm extremely nervous is because I'm here today to get to the point and that is to take responsibility for comments that I made two years ago that were inflammatory towards the Sheriff's Department. Not only did I make inflammatory comments towards the Sheriff's Department, I embarrassed our mayor, our ex-Paris and the City Council. But I also embarrassed myself and I embarrassed my family and I embarrassed my organization, Agents of Change. And one of the things that I teach my kids is that you always have to take responsibility and be accountable whenever you do something that is not appropriate. Two years later has passed and I'm unfortunately able to introduce myself as a human relations commissioner because I have stepped down from that position until the investigation of the comments that I made. But I'm very proud to say, two years later, I happen to have one of the most outstanding relationships with our Captain Pat Nelson. Anything at any time that happens in the community, I communicate directly with Pat Nelson. When he was looking for an advisory member for his committee at the Sheriff's Department, I said, "I will do it." But he didn't just say, "You're appointed." He says, "You need to go to a nine-week training and once you're done, come see me." Sure enough, I did do that. Finally, it's very important that I stay by the comments that I made in the paper a couple days ago. I will stand by our ex-Paris. I will stand by the City Council. I will stand by our City Manager. And I will stand by the comment that I made at the end of that paragraph that said that politics is a full-contact sport and if you're not willing to get dirty, then you need to get out and play somewhere else. And unfortunately, I got a little dirty and I got my organization a little dirty, my family a little dirty. But I hope that our ex-Paris, the City Council, City Manager, our residents, my supporters gave me the soap of forgiveness and helped me wash this out. I am going to step down until this investigation is over. But like I mentioned at the beginning of my statement, it's very important for me to set an example to my kids, to my family, to my nephew that is here today. I actually fell asleep. To show him responsibility and accountability when you do something. And it's very important that I come to you and to ask you to please forgive me and that we're going to meet forward as a community and I look forward to working with you, Mr. Captain Nelson, City Manager and the rest of the council. And again, thank you for my supporters for being here today. I really appreciate it. Have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's... Doctor, yeah, that's great. I mean, it takes, it takes a lot of character to stand up and live up to what you, your actions and everything so, and maybe have a change of heart and stuff. Did you have any thing that you wanted to make an announcement of about the mayor's intentions?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll see you in the near future.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate what you just said. I appreciate your service to the community.
Natalie?
Okay. I would like everybody here, including staff, City Council members, Vice Mayor, ask yourself, have you been a leader today? Beyond that, ask yourself, are you, are you even a leader? Leadership is not an easy thing to carry, let alone our mayor. He is one of the biggest leaders within the city. And I myself am a proud citizen of Lancaster. There's nothing more than I love about the city than the fact that we are community. Community, that is my passion. And I realize, I am young, but I have realized that the game of politics has been played. Our mayor, my mentor, I guess you could say, Mr. Coronado, they got involved with politics. Me being 16 years old, I'm around it. And I would just like our community to realize, I wish I would be speaking to our community, but I would like our community to realize that we cannot point fingers. We're a community and we need to stay together as one and we need to be supportive. There are things such as dirty politics and there are things as offensive language, but we don't know the true intentions. We're not playing the game of politics. We're a community. So I ask everybody here today, even though my back's turned to half of you, I ask you all today to be a leader and don't expect to have leadership if you're not willing to step up. You can't wait for that one person to step up for you. You must, we all must step up together. And I hope as a community, as Lancaster, we can all stand together through this and we can truly make a difference as Agents of Change are wanting to make a difference. Along with that, this really wasn't on my mind when I came here to talk today, but Miss Lancaster is coming up and I am a contestant for Miss Lancaster this year. Yes, I may look 12, but I'm 16. So I'm, I'm not really here to promote myself. I'm here to promote the community as one to go. Go see who your possible Miss Lancasters are. Go see our future leaders, our future women leaders. I will, I encourage everybody here to buy a ticket or, you know, just stay updated with this because it can make a difference. And right now, we need a Miss Lancaster and we need another leader to show our community strength. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
What was, I'm sorry, honey. What was your name?
Oh, my name is Natalie Quintaro.
Natalie, we're going to keep focused on your name because you're going to be going very far and you truly are a leader. And I, we applaud you for everything, literally everything that you said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Reeves?
Vice Mayor Chris, Council... Vice Mayor Crist, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank the AVTA board for providing bus service to the veterans at Building 209. I used to work at the VA hospital in West LA. It's the largest VA facility in the United States and it's divided up into two campuses by Wilshire Boulevard. And many times, I've had to go from one campus to another and I'm a fast walker and it takes me at least 30 to 40 minutes to get to the other side of the campus. And Building 209 is where the people reside who really help the veterans. They help them with housing and jobs and everything. That is the place where the veterans are helped. And it's so great that they'll be able to get to that building and get the help without struggling across the campus. Because as far as I know, there's no shuttle bus. You have to walk it and it's a long walk. Speaking of long walk, I've walked hundreds of, I've visited hundreds of homes the last couple of weekends and I probably, I hope to visit at least 1,000 by April 8th. And we have a great community here and I want to thank the citizens of Lancaster for the kindness that they've shown me as I've walked the neighborhoods in this town. It's incredible. Everybody is so polite and so nice and so interested in their city government. We have a great community here. We should not be polarized. We should be working together and I think we are. Election statistics show that we vote on the basis of character and issues. We don't vote on the basis of race. And I want to thank the council for the three and a half years that you have allowed me to speak before you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this city, not only as a speaker, but as a candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor and council, good evening again. You know, there are some things in life that confuse me. For instance, I changed from my Myoplex to this Muscle Milk. And for some of you that can see, it says genuine Muscle Milk and then below it in smaller print, it says, "Contains no milk." And then, in even smaller print under that, it says, "Includes milk proteins." So that's perplexing. Another thing that's perplexing is why we can't get along when our common fate depends on it. I have a story that they published today in the AV Times online paper and I suggest everyone read it. Talks about the issue of race and how we're going to face it together as a community. And I want to close with one thing that I have no confusion about. The Blue Angels were exciting. Now, I'm an old Army guy, but I have to put on the Navy hat. I took this to the event at Jet Talk Stadium and I have 11 signatures of the Blue Angels. And as exciting as that was, the four days that I spent in my yard looking up at those incredible performances by those aviators, just, I can't put words to it. It was an exciting, incredible experience. And it just shows what this city can do and all the other people that come together to help. Thank you all. I haven't been so inspired in a very long time and I just look forward to more of it. Thank you.
David, thank you. Appreciate your comments. No closed session, correct? Kitty?
The Housing Authority meeting will adjourn until Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014 at 5:00 PM.
And this is when I say, Carol Rex is already home. So city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014 at 5:00.